2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioners, if you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to our American flag, and if you will remain standing, it will be followed by the prayer from our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God of light and peace, we praise you for the way you have blessed our nation and our county with a bounty of resources and talents. Enlighten us this day with the measure of your wisdom that we would use the gifts you have given us for the good of all. Where there is confusion, give us clarity of thought. Where there is danger, cause us to walk carefully. And where there is injustice, help us to work diligently to eliminate it. Empower our nation and our county to continue to be beacons of hope for the cause of freedom. Bless our leaders that we might be guided by your precepts and comforted by your grace. May the work undertaken in this place today be pleasing in your sight and directed by your will, for you live and reign as God forever and ever. Amen.
Commissioners, you have before you your agenda. It was provided to you this week and is properly being publicized to our citizens by our website. You have there all the items before you. I would like to ask that we would move public comments, the Petition of Citizens Number 16 General Topics, that we would include it with Number Three, Petition of Citizens Agenda Topics tonight, and just have one petition of citizens.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any other items? Let me just make sure that there are no other items you desire to pull or add to the agenda tonight. Okay? We have a motion and a second. Here, no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Before we get into our agenda, I just want to state it's good to have our citizens back in the room with us tonight. This is the first time in over a year that we've been able to have citizens to come and participate. And also, tonight, we have an honored individual with us. All of you are honored, our distinguished citizens, but also, I just want to recognize former West Virginia State Senator, Mr. Russ Weeks. We welcome him. He's a citizen here in Craven County now, so we welcome you, sir, and your wife. Glad to have you. First thing on our agenda this evening is the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Mr. County Manager, if he will come and give us a few comments before we go into our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. As per the general statute, every year, we hold a public hearing for the annual budget. The recommended budget was presented on May 17th. It has been available both online and in my office for review by the public. The Board has had subsequent budget work sessions for those, including one earlier today. The Commissioners have reviewed the budget and made some changes to my recommended budget. As recommended, the budget does include a 1.06% tax increase for the enhancement of school safety by funding a school resource officer, or SRO, at every school within Craven County. This budget achieves many goals established by the Board over the last several fiscal years, and at this time, Mr. Chairman, there would be a motion and a second necessary to open the public hearing for citizen comment.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Mark and a second from Commissioner McCabe to go into public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we now stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anybody signed up?
We do have Mr. Bob Brinson, who's coming to speak about the budget.
Good evening, Mr. Brinson.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you also for the budget workshops that were open to the public, that I got to attend. It was a very open, transparent process, so I appreciate that. But my chief complaint about the budget that you're passing tonight is that the school superintendent sent to you is none of the positions requested to be funded are well-defined. There are many director and administrative positions, but we do not know what positions and what functions those personnel perform, unlike the positions that the county manager and the HR director gave you information on as you were going through your budget workshop. So if a citizen or a commissioner, for that matter, does not wish to fund a director or chief of diversity, equity, and inclusion, we cannot strike that position from the budget because we do not know if it exists. I'm opposed to funding any position in any government agency that performs functions related to diversity, equity, or inclusion. Now, before anyone calls me racist for opposing those positions, let me inform you that critical race theory and social justice proponents have redefined all of those words that we normally associate with race and have muddled the common understanding of the issues to their benefit. So to the average person, the tenants sound reasonable and legitimate, but if people knew how CRT redefines the words, the tenants are ominous. In my opinion, the most damaging tenant of CRT is the change of focus from equity to equality, excuse me, from equality to equity. Equality, in an American common understanding, equates to equality of opportunity. Our systems, while flawed and under constant improvement, are designed to treat all citizens equally, and individual success is predicated on individual effort and ability. Equity, however, means adjusting those conditions so that the outcomes are equal, not just for the individual, but for an entire group of people. The oppressed status of a minority group should garner the entire group additional resources to achieve the same level of success as the privileged class. By extending this definition, our government systems are built to continue the status quo, which is equality of opportunity. Any system that has people of color with below-average outcomes, however, according to the CRT, must be biased and therefore torn down. This is how CRT advocates explain that our institutions have systemic bias and are systemically racist and can call for their destruction. They want to have our system rebuilt along equity lines to give preferential treatment to minority classes that will result in equal outcomes rather than equal treatment. The common definition of diversity means having different identities and point of views represented. CRT defines diversity as people with diverse ethnic origins who also share the same woke understanding of power dynamics and social positions. As you can see, CRT puts race front and center and deflects all criticism by definition. This line of reasoning is how a nation can elect a black president and a black vice president and still be considered a racist country, according to CRT. The common definition of inclusion is welcoming all people and ideas. CRT definition of inclusion means not excluding protected classes and their differing opinions. Therefore, what happens in CRT practice is opinions that are not in keeping with their ideology are not allowed because they are considered either racist, oppressive, or not woke. This goes well beyond deflection of critiques but extends to excluding all opinions that are in contradiction to their beliefs, so much for tolerance and so much for openness in our school system. There will be DEI training this summer to the school administrators and an equity audit that is coming, probably this fall. I expect then findings out of that equity audit to come here to this Board as budget resolutions addressing all of those topics. Therefore, for full disclosure, the superintendent needs to identify all the positions and functions of the directors and administrative officials before you fully vote to fund them. It is also my opinion you should withhold all capital outlays for the school system until they present their consolidation plan to you. For reference, the superintendent admitted the system has lost over 200 students per year over the last five years and almost 1,000 students alone during the COVID shutdown. With a loss of 2,000 students and current vacancies of over 180 teachers and other positions, the school board should be looking at shuttering a school or two and fixing those as opposed to spending millions to fix them all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Is that all? We have nobody else signed up? All right. Do I have a motion to go out of public hearing? We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back into open session here. Next item, too, would be the public hearing on the sale of property in the industrial park. Mr. Jeff Wood, our economic director. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I have the orders to conduct a public hearing as advertised to receive public input on the sale of property in the Craven County Industrial Park pursuant to NCGS 158-7.1. Craven County intends to convey, for economic development purposes, a fee simple interest eight-acre tract of land, the tract consisting of lot 19-6, and two acres to be subdivided from lot 19-7, both in the Craven County Industrial Park. Value of the tract is $20,000 an acre for a total value of $160,000, and the county intends to convey at the sale same such value.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go out into a public hearing.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Do we have anybody signed up?
We do not.
Okay. Are there any citizens desiring to speak that may have not signed up?
All right, I make a motion to go out of public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go out of public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back to the Board. All right. Number three is the petition of citizens. As you approved with your agenda tonight, we will be discussing agenda topics and general topics. Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, the first speaker will be Lillian Krieger.
And with this, I think we do have our three-minute timeframe, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So just to make sure you know. All right, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lillian Krieger. I am a resident of Craven County since 1963. And this evening, I am here to address critical race theory. Academia has given our country a racist identity, teaching a generation of young Americans to hate our country and to put the foundation of a Marxist society in place. It's a policy that allows teachers to give CRT-based surveys to their students, asking questions about sexuality, gender, religion, race, et cetera. These surveys are a Marxist ilk because it is reporting on each other. If a student or their parents protest refusing to fill the survey, the student is sent to principal's office and they must answer the survey, ignoring the student's right or conscience and right to privacy, also ignoring the parent's rightful role to raise their child. Also, the principal applies pressure on the student to talk about their families, which is frankly none of the school system's business unless the family impacts the school system detrimentally. Academia is committed to lie that America is systematically racist. Children should never hear this. Racism is hate, pure and simple. All children are special. The single greatest evil is the perversion of language. This is what Goebbels taught to make propaganda pervert, the language. Pick on one issue and ignore the bigger picture to create a narrative and drive it home. Equality is an example. It refers to equal outcomes, not equal opportunity. MLK fought against the very things academia is pushing today. We should not tolerate this. No taxpayer monies should go to any institution teaching even a hint of critical race theory. Further, we want an accounting that no county monies goes to CRT at the end of the year before that next budget is approved. Our children are being indoctrinated. I want to leave you with an urgent plea. Please learn all you can on what is going on in our state's public school system with all its policies of critical race theory and social progressivism. We are all created by the same God, so why do we attack and betray those whom God created? Thank you.
Next speaker would be Glenn Fink.
Good evening, I'm Glenn Fink at 646 Goose Creek Road. I'm here to speak against critical race theory as well. Until recently, my focus has been on public schools, but a Bible study brother of mine recently recommended I read a book titled Fault Lines: The Social Justice Movement Evangelicalism Booming Catastrophe by Voty T. Vokum Jr. Just from the reading of the title, which was tough, I've missed what should be my top priority on critical race theory, our churches. From the cover tab inside, this book of Voty's, "A Preacher, Professor, or Cultural Apologist Explains the Sinister Worldview Behind the Social Justice Movement of the Critical Race Theory, Revealing How It Already Has Infiltrated Some Seminaries, Leading to Internal Dominational Conflict, Cancelled Careers, and Lost Livelihoods." Like a fault line, it threatens American culture in general and the evangelical church in particular. This book provides a very credible, high-level view of critical race theory. This really hits close to home when Voty called out the recent wokeness of David Platt. He received his PhD from the Baptist Theological Seminary, super solid pastor. Our Bible study uses a lot of his books in the process of doing our studies on Wednesday morning at 5:00. And when somebody like David Platt can get moved in how he approaches things, that rocks my world. This is a war against all institutions of our constitutional republic. In addition to our schools and our churches, many of our major companies are buying into this movement and becoming more and more woke. This movement is being driven into every fabric of our communities. The primary mode of operation is to sow division between the brown, black, and along with other all marginalized groups against white America, and more specifically, traditional Christian family values. This must be stopped at every point of entry, and I just say, Commissioners, you are my primary first line of defense against this movement. I need you to take all actions possible to keep this out of our organizations and to have, that you have direct control of, and any influence you have on other people. If you'll read and share, I'll provide a copy of this book. I've also copies of another piece of information that'll be useful. If no one wants to read it, just let somebody call me and I'll come back and pick it up. But I don't want us to follow from behind on this. We need to not wait for the state to take action. We don't need to wait for anybody else to take action. We need to be looking at what's going on, and we need to ferret out this evilness and make sure that we don't let our local society be overtaken by this. It's our responsibility. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Herrup.
Thank you very much. Greetings to the Commissioners, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to speak my views against critical race theory. I live at 909 Carrick Carrick Drive. I've been a resident of Craven County for over nine years and lived in North Carolina for over 40 years. Just a little bit about my background. I am a doctoral-level clinical psychologist. I was mental health director and chief psychologist for the Department of Correction for over 30 years. I am very concerned about the impact of critical race theory, the 1619 Project, social justice training, equity training, all these other titles that basically come down, similar kind of Marxist doctrine that will be very detrimental to our schools. I am very concerned, not only about the impact on organizations, but the impact on children. Children will be detrimentally impacted, white children in a negative way as well as black children. And I have included for you some handouts in which I detail those concerns, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to read them. The other thing I wanted to say is that, looking at our government, we are a republic. A republic, the essence of a republic is that the influence for the citizens starts at the lower level. It starts at the county level, the city level, builds up to the state, so on and so forth. And that's why I am strongly recommending that the county Commissioners take this resolution that I have proposed. I have a draft resolution in that packet of material I'm leaving. Brunswick County has recently passed a similar resolution. I think Craven County has the opportunity to be a leader in this field and to let our citizens know that we are there to protect them. As elected officials, you have that responsibility. We, as citizens, have the responsibility to let you know what we are concerned about, and that's why I'm here tonight. So those are the things I'm recommending. If I can be of any value to you in the future to elaborate on the things I'm concerned about, I'd be glad to do that. I will note that there are 19 states that have already passed laws against critical race theory, and I know it's been considered, not only by, it's already been considered by Brunswick County, and I believe there are other counties in North Carolina. We have an opportunity to be a leader and let, not only the citizens, but businesses that may be considering coming to Craven County to know where we stand on this very, very critical issue. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right, we appreciate all the citizens that came before the Board this evening to speak on the many items. Thank you. Next before us is the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items you desire to pull from the consent agenda? You have the minutes of the May 17 regular session, May 17 reconvene session, May 19 reconvene session, and the May 21 reconvene session. You also have the tax releases and refunds. You have a request to settle public hearing for July 6 at 7:00 p.m. regarding the Chapter 160D ordinance updates. You have the recreation budget amendment and the sheriff's K-9 donation budget amendment. Any items to pull?
I make a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the consent agenda as it is.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept this consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. On the departmental matters, first, we have elections. We have the adoption and acquisition of voting equipment. Ms. Melanie Ray, good evening.
Good evening. I did bring you a handout so you would at least see the equipment that we're purchasing, sir, what it looks like. I'm into the steps of our certification of using our HAVA funds, the 93,050 HAVA funds that we received that you did pre-approve for us to accept, for us to be able to buy new voting equipment. The State Board set out several steps that have to be followed to do this. You did pre-approve the purchase, but you just have to give a final approval before we can order it, and in your packet, in your information is just a, you know, just a yea or nay for the approval for us to purchase it. We are purchasing 27 Express votes. They are taking the place of our Ottermarks, which are ADA equipment. They're the big things that sit on a table. These are quite smaller, and it's where technology is going. They were tested, they were demonstrated, and we did a mock election with them, simulated election, and this is what our Board is recommending to you to give final approval for us to adopt and acquire.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Ray?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion that we approve this purchase.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Good evening, Melanie.
Good evening.
My sources, someone has contacted me and expressed a concern that this equipment, at least this manufacturer, sold equipment to the state, some counties in Texas, where there were problems with it. And again, I don't know if this is accurate, so I'm only giving you what I was told, that there were modems in these equipment allowing them to connect to the Internet. Is that your understanding, or is there not?
In this, there are no modems in this. In our DS200s, there are modems, but they are disabled and not allowed in North Carolina. So we do not hook any of our equipment up to a computer that goes to the Internet at all. We use flash drives.
Okay, so that was the big concern that this person expressed to me, that apparently, as you know better than any of us, there was a lot of controversy this past election, about equipment, about equipment failure, about different manufacturers, or equipment made in South America, and all that noise that was going on back in November. So again, if you're comfortable, my big concern was this Internet thing and making sure that we're not buying modems that we can't use, don't need, don't want.
No, the equipment that we have, there's three certified companies in North Carolina, ESNS, which is this product, and which is what we have, the DS200s by ESNS, and all the equipment we've had in Craven County has been with ESNS because they were the first ones to be certified. In the last two years, Hart has been certified and Clearvote, but because we have ESNS DS200s, you cannot mix different vendors. So this is the next level to replace our Ottermarks, which are becoming obsolete and no parts available anymore, which we only use for ADA. So they're not used that much, but we do have to have them by law. But the DS200s are strictly a paper ballot scanner. Yes, they do have the capability for modems, but we do not use them, never have used them, and at this point in time, do not foresee us to use them.
Thank you. You've answered my question.
Further discussion on the motion? I do have one. Was this a unanimous vote by the Board of Elections?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right. And any citizen that desires, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Melanie. Next item is CARTS, the request to receive additional 5311 CARES Act funding. Ms. Kelly Walker, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you. CARTS has been awarded an additional $78,030 in 5311 CARES Act operating funds. This brings the total CARES Act rule funding to $1,156,650. A period of performance extension from June 30, 2021, until June 30, 2022, was provided to all transit systems for the 5311, or rule CARES Act funding. CARTS anticipates using the additional funds during the fiscal year 2022 budget year and will submit a budget amendment request at such time when is needed. CARTS is requesting authorization for the Chairman to sign the agreement, which is your attachment number six, for a 5311 CARES Act rule grant funding total of $1,156,650.
Okay, before we take a motion, are there any questions from Ms. Walker that your Board has?
Want to do it before the motion?
Well, if you've got questions, you know, go ahead.
Kelly, this new money follows suit with the previous one. This does not apply to capital, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, any other additional questions? All right, here, none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner McCabe, any further discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll, please.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
Next item is solid waste. Mr. Stephen Astor, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to present to you guys today. I have two agenda items for your consideration tonight, and I will begin with the first budget amendment for our convenience sites. Since the beginning of the year, the solid waste department has seen a significant increase in volume of trash and citizens visiting our convenience sites. This increase has led to record-setting numbers This increase has led to record-setting numbers of waste boxes being emptied. This increase in numbers at our convenience sites has put the solid waste department in a shortfall for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in the convenience site hauling line. This line is, is the line that the solid waste department pays our contractor to haul the full dumpsters to the landfill or the recycling MRF and bring back empties. Solid waste department budgeted for three hundred and forty-six pools, which is waste, waste containers emptied by our contractor per month in this fiscal year. With two remaining months in this fiscal year, we are averaging about three hundred and fifty-six per month. Because of this increase, the solid waste department is asking the Craven County Board of Commissioners to approve the budget amendment of thirty-nine thousand dollars to cover the remaining two months of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Astor? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Astor, what percentage is, would you measure the increase? Twenty percent, fifteen percent? That's question number one. And the other one, do you think this is a COVID blip? Or do you think that the increase in pools is going to continue on the future fiscal years?
Excellent question. We're about one month behind, so we pay about forty thousand dollars per month for convenience site hauling, and that's typically around three hundred and fifty pools, three hundred and fifty-six pools. When we try to budget at the beginning of the year, it's, it's just a guesstimation of years past and what we've come. I will say that this fiscal year, we are seeing numbers that are in relation to Hurricane Florence numbers. We, I've never seen pools over four hundred and twenty a month, and this year, we did, we had that twice. So, it's just a fluctuation. I mean, some months I have in the two hundred, upper two hundreds, and some months, unfortunately, we have in the low four hundreds. So, I would say, I think that's a fifteen percent increase, and I would say it's not COVID-related. I think this is going to be sustaining.
Still sustaining?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, other questions?
Stephen, just for the information, I guess, for the, for the public, when they take this, these big containers and haul them away?
Yes, sir.
Most of it is, we get nothing for, but we do get some income from some metal, is that correct?
We do, yes, sir.
What would that amount to in a month or a year, just ballpark?
Yeah, like our hauling, our metal has gone up as well, and I believe, if you want to give me a ballpark off the top of my head, I think we're around the ten, eleven thousand dollars a month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Here, none, do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And that is to approve the budget amendment of thirty-nine thousand to cover the remaining of two months for this fiscal year of convenience site hauling. Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, the second item.
Thank you, Board. My second item is in regards to the property in Fort Barnwell, which is adjacent to our convenience site that we currently have. The board previously approved the purchase agreement for the property located at two-four-one Belltown Road in Fort Barnwell. Subsequently, staff has obtained a survey and environmental assessment, a title exam, all for this property. Those due diligence items show that the property is acceptable for the county's intended use. In turn, the county is in position to close on the purchase of this property in the coming weeks. Staff and legal counsel recommend that the board authorize the county to move forward with closing on the property. In order, in order to proceed, excuse me, the budget amendment in the amount of nineteen thousand needs to be approved. This amount reflects the purchase price of fifteen thousand dollars for the property, a thousand dollars for the environmental assessment, and three thousand dollars in settlement costs and legal fees. At this time, the solid waste department asks the board to consider approving the budget amendment in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars for approving, and also approve the closing on the purchase of the real property located at two-four-one Belltown Road in Fort Barnwell, North Carolina, as well as authorize the chairman, the vice chair, the clerk to the board, the county manager, assistant county manager, and the county attorney to take such action as may be reasonably necessary for the same.
All right, are there any questions? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
Have a motion and a second, is the discussion on the motion? I just would state, I know this is just for our information, but on the settlement statement, you have their property location is Bailey Lane. Make sure that that's, that was for the Vanceboro property. Please take note of that. All right, no other discussion items? All right, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Board.
Appreciate it. Next, we have planning, the subdivision for approval, Mr. Chad Strong. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. On April twenty-second, the planning board met and recommends the following subdivision for approval, the meal phase two at Heritage Farms. Property is owned by Blades Road LLC. Subdivision is engineered by Thomas Engineering and surveyed by Herbert Jones, I mean, Nobles. Property is located within Township Five off of Blades Road. Subdivision contains fourteen lots on eight point oh six acres, and the lots will be served by Craven County Water and Individual Septic System. A vote is needed to approve the meal phase two at Heritage Farms.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Strong? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the phase two at Heritage Farms. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Next will be social services, CARES Act funding, Mr. Jeffrey Merrick, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, how are you doing? We've come before you about a matter that we've previously been before. This is in related to CARES Act funding and that we received through, that was committed to Craven County through the AAA, and we were given the opportunity to request funds within certain parameters, and what we could do is add additional funding for programs and also for enhanced improvements to buildings that would, that would help us during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And what this is for is to add additional funds to cover the cost of some of those building improvements. Initially, we had to get the cost estimates in fairly quickly due to the time limit in nature, and since time has gone on, you know, there's costs of expanding, there's additional monies there that's available. All those funds weren't requested, there's no county dollars, so what we're asking today is just, we've already have approval from AAA for this twenty thousand dollars, is to take that money from, the AAA has granted to put towards those projects, to put in our budget to be able to pay the expenditures for those projects once they're completed.
All right, any questions for Mr. Merrick?
No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Commissioner Liner, you have anything? All right, no discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next would be the Water Department budget amendment, Mr. Al Gerard. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good to see you all kind of getting back where we need to be.
There you go.
Yes, I've been up here before about this, which I think is good news. We are continually putting in more taps, there's growth in the county, I like that. It's revenue, it's what we need for our enterprise fund. So, I am coming up and asking for additional forty thousand dollars, because I do see that when this was written, we, at least eighty-three, I've got probably twelve more taps I call in the oven, and then we've got potential probably for thirty more, so we will spend, probably spend that money if we don't, I'll, I'll be back.
Okay.
Need your approval.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gerard? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you all. Good evening.
All right. The Sheriff of Craven County, Mr. Chip Hughes, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I've got three things I wanted to go over with you tonight. First is going to be retirement or resignation payouts. We have three of them. First, after faithfully serving the sheriff's office for many years, Sergeant William Marsh decided to retire. This was not something we saw coming, but we hated to see him leave, because he's, he's been a fantastic deputy the whole time, has been extremely loyal, and has served our county well. His payout has listed, he had a substantial amount of holiday payout. All of these payouts tonight, I want you to know, there was no comp time except for a half, a half hour with one of the deputies. So, we have done a really good job of bringing a very large amount of comp time down to next to nothing. However, the holiday and annual leave payout, when these folks choose to leave, resign, or retire, is what we're having to deal with. So, we have three of them here tonight. Total leave, sixty thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars for your consideration.
All right, are there any questions for the sheriff? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? The motion is for a budget amendment of sixty thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and nineteen cents. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, item B.
The next one is for MRAP upfitting, which is our high-rise armored vehicle. This is going to include equipment that was put on, radio, laptop, emergency lighting equipment, the marking that's required by the feds when they turn these vehicles over to us, and also some boat expenses in the form of oil and gas that was used during a number of times when we've been dispatched for search and rescue operations.
All right, any questions for the sheriff? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
Have a second?
No move.
Have a second, any discussion on the motion? Here, yes, Ma, Commissioner?
I have a question. I think you said oil and gas that was used during the operation of the vehicle?
Of the boat.
Of the boat.
Yes, ma'am.
Why is it that part of your budget?
Well, we got the boat, when we got the boat, it was before, or, excuse me, it was after the budget was approved, so it was not in there specifically for boat, gas, and oil.
So, what I would call boat O and M was not in this past year's budget?
Mr. County Manager, you want to?
Yes, so there's two different actions. Item B is taking money from the general fund, and item C is taking it from the seized asset fund, so putting the boat expenses there with the MRAP out of the general fund, and then the boat expenses will be out of the sheriff's seized asset fund.
Makes sense, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions? Here, none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
No.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, item C.
Yes, sir. The last one is moving forfeiture funds or our substance abuse tax funds from revenue to expenditure for the upfitting of our search and rescue boat.
All right, any questions for the sheriff on this?
How much is left in the seized asset forfeiture fund?
As of tonight, I don't know exactly. It fluctuates, given as?
Craig can probably answer that, just hold.
About twenty thousand, ma'am.
About twenty thousand, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Here, none, do I have a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion on the motion? The motion is for a budget amendment in the amount of seventy-three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
No.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Sheriff, as I always do, I want to give you the opportunity to address the board and the citizens of the county, anything you have that you want to share with us tonight.
Sheriff, everything's going really well. I want to thank you all once again for putting the SRO positions in the budget. It is crucial that we be able to provide safety and security to all of our schools in this county, and I thank you for doing that. We are getting some really qualified applicants for these positions, and it's a fairly long vetting process, because they have to wear multiple hats, and we're working very closely with the school system to make sure that these SROs are a very good fit for the schools that they'll be assigned to. So, that's the biggest thing right now, and it is looking, it's looking very good for our school system to have an outstanding group of SROs.
Well, we appreciate the joint effort with your office and working with us to accomplish that, and we think that's going to be something great for Craven County for many years to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you being here this evening. All right, next, on number twelve, would be economic development, sale of property in the Craven County industrial park, Mr. Jeff Woods. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, excited to bring this project forward to you guys today. Been working with this company for quite some time. They're buying eight acres of property. Want to introduce some guests. We have the founder, CEO, and president of ASI, Felipe Rodriguez.
Welcome.
His production manager here locally, Sean Runkew, in his white Trinity. Currently, they're in a facility in James City with about four employees, so those four employees will be retained, and additional thirty employees will be created over the next five years, about a five-point-six-million-dollar investment. This tackles both target industries of aerospace and military defense-related. Couldn't have asked for a better partner for us within the industrial park. They're going to be, they are a supply chain management company, they're going to be increasing in manufacturing and engineering. And so, not only do we have a chance to work with ASI, of which we competed with for this project, against folks like Texas and California and Virginia, and, you know, we did everything we could on the economic development office side of things, but much as Phil was quoted in the paper, saying it was, it was truly the synergies of what he saw that was going on in Craven County, the workforce that we have, the training programs that we have, the innovation and the relationships we have with folks like ECU at NC State. So, come forward asking for the sale of this property, and also, I want to thank Phil for the investment that you're going to be making and the jobs that you're going to be creating.
Yes, and Mr. Phil, if I can, just echo that on behalf of this board of commissioners and for the 100,000-plus citizens of this county, we thank you for investing in us. We thank you for that. Appreciate it. Are there any questions? All right. You're none. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? You're none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Well, let's have a roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the purchase of this property. That's great. Next would be the finance office, Mr. Craig Warren.
Good evening. I have several items on the agenda for you tonight. The first one is a public school building capital fund application. Each year, the Board of Education and County Commissioners jointly approve a project application to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. This application is required in order to draw down the lottery proceeds that have been allocated to Craven County by the state in the public school building capital fund. These funds are restricted and can only be used for school construction projects or to retire debt service incurred as a result of those construction projects. This time, I'd like to ask the board to approve the application. If you'll see that the school board has already done so.
Okay. Are there any questions for Finance Director? You're none. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? You're none. This is to jointly sign this application for the lottery proceeds. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Actually, a roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right.
Thank you. Moving on to the second item is the budget amendment for the medical examiner's office. Craven County has experienced an increase in the number of autopsies performed this year by the chief medical examiner's office. Expenditures year-to-date are running 13% ahead of last fiscal year and have exceeded our original budget estimates. The current fee for each autopsy performed is $1,750. It is estimated that $30,000 will be needed to get us through the remainder of the fiscal year. So if I kind of look into the budget right now, we've budgeted $125,000 so far, and I think we're looking right about $155,000 for this year's over. Just counting up, the number of autopsies, we're at 77 year-to-date versus 68. So about 13% ahead.
Any questions for Mr. Warren? You're none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? This is a budget amendment in the amount of $30,000. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Okay. The third and final item for me is a budget amendment for the registered deeds office. The registered deeds collects a real estate excise tax on all real property transactions recorded. Of the amount collected, approximately 48% is remitted to the North Carolina Department of Revenue, and we do this on a monthly basis. Additionally, 1.5%
of all the fees collected by the registered deeds excluding excise taxes are required to be set aside and remitted to the RID or the registered deeds supplemental pension fund. Collections to date are running ahead of schedule, creating a projected shortage in this account. The estimated need at this time is $305,000 to continue paying the state their portion of the fees through the remainder of the year. So if you look at the budget amendment, there are revenues to support this outgoing expenditure, and the expenditure is a direct result of the revenues collected, the registered deeds.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Warren?
So what you're saying, this is a wash?
It's a wash. And so it is kind of an idea. If you look at what kind of business the registered deeds office is doing, you can kind of get an idea of how much land transactions are being turned over. So you see, it's.
Make a motion to accept. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I do just want to state for the record, when I saw the $305,000, and then also saw that some of it goes into the supplemental pension fund, just for the record, $300,000 goes back to the state.
Right.
And only $5,000 will go into that fund. And that is state mandated. That's not something that.
That's correct. That's set by general statutes.
Right. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? You're none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next is appointments. We have pending, current, and upcoming appointments. First, you have pending appointments. You have a list there. Are there any nominations from the board for any of those? You're none. We will move to current appointments. The Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council. Commissioner Liner, you asked that we defer this at our last meeting.
I nominate Steve Coffey since we've got our situation taken care of. He'd fill that seat vacated by Mr. Zicadelli.
We have a nomination of Mr. Steve Coffey. Are there any other nominations? You're none. He will be accepted by acclamation. Next is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. You have there a list of individuals. I think all of them are currently serving Marissa Byer, Clint Rowe, Stacy Huss, and Billy Mathis. What's the desire of the board?
I recommend that we reappoint them.
All right. We have a nomination for all four. Are there any additional nominations for these four? You're none. They will be accepted by acclamation. Next, you have the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Authority, Mrs. Leslie Hunter. She was originally appointed in 2012, seeks reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jeff Woods to fill that seat.
We have the nomination of Jeff Woods, and I reckon that's our economic director.
Economic development person.
Are there any other nominations? There are no other nominations. Mr. Jeff Wood is accepted by acclamation. All right. Next is the Craven County Planning Board. Ms. Nadia Anderson, appointed in 2017, represents District Five. Commissioner McCabe.
I'd like to reappoint Ms. Anderson, please.
All right. We have a nomination for Mrs. Anderson. Are there any other nominations? Here's none. She will be accepted by acclamation. Next is Fire Tax Commissioners, Mr. Carl Bart from Township Eight Rims, and Mr. Chad Anderson from Township Eight West Newburn. Are there any nominations? I would ask that both be reappointed then. Are there any other nominations? You're none. They will be accepted by acclamation also. Next would be the Craven County ABC Board. We have an applicant, Mr. Kenneth Morris III, who seeks reappointment. Field the term of Mr. Charles Collins, and I believe Mr. Collins, he has exceeded now the 10-year rule of our board. What's the desire of the board?
I'll make Kenneth Morris.
We have a nomination for Kenneth Morris. Is that what you said too? Okay. Are there any other nominations? You're none. Do what? Okay. You're none. Mr. Morris is accepted also by acclamation. You have there the upcoming terms that are expiring in June and July. There's also another list. There are right many there. Before you, please take note and be ready to vote on them at the appropriate time. Are there any other nominations for any other appointments tonight? You're none. Next would be the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady. Good evening, sir.
Commissioner Grady. Commissioners, I have one item for you this evening. It involves an initial offer on county-owned real estate that the county acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The property has an address of 2036 Caracara Drive. Parcel ID number is 2-050-337. The offer amount is $4,000. The taxes and the cost of foreclosure in the tax foreclosure were $3,852.43, and the tax value on the property is $5,080. As the board is aware, if you approve this offer this evening, we'll put the property out for upset bids, and it'll be back before the board for final approval when that process is concluded.
I will make a motion to accept that.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? And this is for parcel number 2-050-337. You're none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next would be the County Manager's Report. Mr. Jack White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the second opportunity. Two quick remarks tonight. One, I wanted to recognize one of our long-term employees, Thelma Spivey. She retired a couple weeks ago. Thelma was a full-time carts driver, and she served the county almost 41 years before she retired. And Thelma's going to take a grand total of one month off and come back and drive part-time for us now. She didn't get enough the first time around, but we're really proud of Thelma. She was a great employee and someone we all looked to, and we're going to really miss her, but happy she's going to come back and still continue to serve. So I want to make the board aware of that. Second, Mr. Chairman, now that the public hearing has been completed for the annual budget, I would ask the board if you are prepared to make a decision on whether Mr. Warren should begin with the budget ordinance, or you would like to meet again.
All right. You've heard the request of the county manager. Let's go down the line. Commissioner Smith, are you comfortable?
I am.
Okay. Commissioner Liner. Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
No.
You're not. All right, Vice Chair, you're comfortable. Commissioner Mark, do you desire to have an additional work session?
Yes.
All right. We need to schedule that. And you said, I think you had told me today during the budget discussions, that you thought we needed to have that this week?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, if you will, please check your calendars for this week.
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is recessing this meeting instead of adjourning. I'll just throw a date out of Wednesday, June 9.
Wednesday, June 9. I have a Craven Community College Board of Trustees retreat all day.
Okay. I'm just, I just said the 9th. I'm just throwing one out.
I can do late in the day. I've got two conflicting board meetings up.
What time is it?
All day.
I mean, but what time late in the day would you be available?
16:00.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
3:34.
I can do four o'clock. I've got a commitment that evening.
Okay. Wednesday at four o'clock.
I won't be here. I've got a meeting at five o'clock.
Okay.
About three, could we do 3:30? I'll slip out early.
It's not long. We do it 3:30.
Shouldn't be too long. Wednesday at 3:30.
I'll slip out early. Let's do that.
Is that a consensus?
Ms. Chairman, just for the public, it'd be in this room.
Be in this room. Okay.
Okay. 3:30 Wednesday.
All right. So after this, when we conclude this meeting tonight, we will recess to June 9 at 3:30 in this room.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that's all I had, unless you have something for me.
No. The only thing I would ask is, I think if Commissioner Mark, if you could get with county manager, maybe to have him be prepared to any kind of information you may need and desire from staff, so we can be prepared to discuss Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for the county manager or any Commissioners? All right. All right. Thank you, Jack. All right. Commissioners' report. Commissioner Mark, I'll let you go first.
Actually, I have a meeting tomorrow at the hospital board at 9:00. As you know, we have affiliated with UNC, which should help as far as bringing some of the doctors down to us rather than us going to Raleigh to see them. And also, they will become a teaching hospital. So that's news I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner McCabe.
Yes, Chairman. I did attend the RPO meeting last week where Halblock Bypass has 26% completed, and estimated completion time would be 5:13:24. Also, there will be three lanes on Highway 70 from Nuth River Bridge to Thurman Road in James City. It's also have 16% completed, and the estimated completion would be 12:223. And on Maple Sykes Bridge replacement off River Road, where the survey had started, estimated completion time would be 12:12:24. Right now, it's completely 0%. And that's all I have at this present time. Mr. Chair?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner McCabe. Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This refers to the matter that I brought up with you earlier. With the concurrence of the rest of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to invite the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission to host their quarterly meeting either first or second quarter of 2022, at the invitation of Craven County at the Convention Center in a public forum, so that Eastern North Carolina will have the opportunity to attend.
All right. You're no objection from the board? All right. I think you have that support?
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Liner.
Sir, I have two things. I want to thank everybody that came out on the Memorial Day celebrations that the Veterans Council put on over here on the courthouse. We had over 100 people in attendance. That was a good showing for not being advertised or sent out. And hopefully, next year, they'll open up the VA cemetery. We'll have it back into the cemetery where it's supposed to be at. But we had a good turnout, and it was well received by everyone. Second, if I, I would like to, if I can get the permission of the board, the direct staff, I'd like to put together some type of resolution, support Dr. Doyle for what she has done for the county. Has nothing to do with the school board, or keeping her here. That's done and gone. But how she's worked with us and what she's done for us. So if I could get approval for that, to have the staff come up with something.
You have a motion?
Just need a consensus that everybody's right.
All right.
I support that.
Do you have any objection?
No.
I fully support it.
You don't have no objection, so staff will to help get with Commissioner Liner.
Okay.
Is that all?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell. I mean, Smith.
I don't have, I do not have anything to report tonight. However, I would like to remind our citizens that though COVID has declined, it is still in our communities. And so I'm encouraging everyone who've not taken their vaccination to do so as soon as possible.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I just have one thing. Those of you who do not subscribe, this was yesterday's Sun Journal. The headline says, "Doyle to Receive $212,000 Severance." I've had a number of inquiries the last couple of days, yesterday and today. People asking me, why do you get severance pay when you resign? I think the answer is very simple. She wasn't, she didn't just decide to go off in the sunset. She was asked to resign, I guess is the best way to say it. So the result was, if you ask somebody to resign, and she had a three-year contract, they gave her essentially one year's pay, roughly, a little more than one year's pay. I just want the public to know that, you know, we've had a number of people have contacted us and asked us, you know, what are you going to do about that? What are you going to do about critical race theory? The function of the county, and this is not to say we can't speak about it, that we can't express our opinions to the board. The Board of Education decides what the curriculum is. They decide who the superintendent is. They decide if the superintendent is going to go or stay. We basically fund the facilities. We're responsible for the buildings. We're responsible for the, not the teachers pay. Most of the teachers are paid by the state, but many of the other positions. And Mr. Brinson, I thought, expressed himself well by saying, we need to know what those positions are that we are funding. And we've never been given that information, at least not to my knowledge. So I just want the public to know, we want to hear from you. We want to know what your concerns are. But we also want you to know what our limitations are. We don't have the ability to tell the school board how to run the schools. You elect the school board. You pick the school board, and by picking the school board, you're picking the people to run the schools, to hire the superintendent, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to make that point to clarify it. And I'm not, my message here is not to say that I am a pro or con on Mrs. Doyle. I just, the article says in here that to allow for this payment, the Board of Education approved a budget amendment that moves the money from the board's fund balance. Well, the fund balance is their savings account. So they took $212,000 out of their savings account to pay for this separation. I want to remind everybody that that's taxpayers' money. It may be in their savings account, but it came from you. It came from all the taxpayers in Craven County who put that money into the savings account. So just a clarification on that, so the public understands what went on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is a closed session. We're requested to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other business in Craven County. Mr. County Manager, Mr. Attorney, will we bring anything back to open session to vote on?
I don't believe so.
Okay. So no, we're not anticipating no action at this time.
Right.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
We can five?
Yes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take a five-minute recess. We'll take a five-minute recess.